Okay, it is four oh two. I think we're all ready. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. So we'll call the special meeting of the Milpitas City Council on February eighteenth, twenty twenty five to order. While this meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comments may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. The city council meeting is available for instant translation in over fifty languages with wordly, accessible via mobile phone, computer and video displays by scanning the QR code located on the title page of the agenda in the upper right-hand corner. So back to today's business, City Clerk Guzzetta, please take the roll call.
Vice Mayor Barbara Diaw.
Here.
Councilmember Chua.
Here.
Councilmember Lam.
Yeah.
Councilmember Leanne.
Here.
Mayor Montana.
And I am here. Thank you very much for that. So now let's do the pledge of allegiance. Everybody rise. And I'm gonna ask volunteer who would like to lead.
Ladies and gentlemen, our flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, now, public forum. So let's move on to public forum. Members of the public are invited to address the city council on the agenda item detailed below. Please note that on your agenda, please note that oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. And public forum will be limited to three minutes. Any speakers, City Clerk?
I have no public speaker card, Mayor.
Is there anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara Diaw.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lam.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montana.
And I am none.
Thank you, Mayor. And because there are no conflicts and no development projects on this special agenda, the second adminition can be disposed of. No conflicts are reported. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So now we'll have Councilmember Chua read the code of conduct.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Milpitas City Council's Code of Conduct. Be respectful and courteous. Model civility. Avoid surprises. Praise publicly and criticize privately. Focus on the issue, not the person. Refrain from using electronic devices while on the dais. Disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to the agenda items. Separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making a decision. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this code of conduct. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for that. Excuse me, I still have that lingering cough, so pardon me. Okay, so now moving on to the approval of the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to make any changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'm calling for a motion. So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Chua and seconded by Vice Mayor Barbara Diaw. And call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara Diaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lam.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montana.
And I am an aye.
Okay, now we're moving on to the agenda items. So we want to receive a staff presentation on the preliminary fiscal year twenty twenty six to thirty-five, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a few brief comment remarks and then turn the time over to our Finance Director, Luis Capri C. Howe. So thank you for gathering early today, a little earlier than we normally have our even a special meeting. And we're glad to all be here. We have all of the department directors here today as well. This is our annual budget study session. It's informational only. You'll, as we go through the PowerPoint in just a moment, you'll see that we have a review of the accomplishments from the past year under the current fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We also have a summary of the survey results from the community survey that is done on an annual basis as part of the budget process. The Finance Department will also provide an overview of economic indicators and also a financial for the city's ten-year financial forecast. And then we'll look for some initial discussion and some initial direction from the council as we continue to put together our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget. This meeting is usually held at the end, at the end of January. We're a few weeks later than that. We wanted to give our finance team a little extra time to scrub the numbers. Really good. And they're here to present. We also have our new budget manager here too, Alice Birch. We'll be hearing her in just a moment. So with that, I'll turn the time over to our Finance Director, Luis Capri C. Howe for a presentation.
Thank you.
Go, Councilmember Leanne, Chua, and Lam. Thank you for your time today. Today is an informational meeting, as always, it's gonna be a conversation. I'd like to take the time to thank everybody in the department, not just people who were in the room, but people who were outside the room, took their time and really worked to get us good numbers as best we can. I also wanna point to my right and Alice, and how do I say your last name? Birch, okay? Birch, I've been saying it wrong for five years and she's just finally corrected me like two weeks ago. So this is week number six. And she has been absolutely instrumental in putting this together. Frankly, we couldn't, I would not be here, we would not be here had she not done so. I wanna thank her. I wanna thank Gabby and her team. Gabby's hiding in the back. But, and Christine and everyone else in Shulley and Jessica and the rest of the financial team. But everyone has been very helpful. I'm gonna remind you, this is our first time doing this. Both of our first time doing this. Have mercy.
Director Luis. We'll keep that in mind.
Uh, Mayor. If I may.
Can you let us finish?
No, I just, no, I think so. You're definitely, you're gonna start with the thing.
Yes.
I, I, I just wanna take like thirty seconds to a minute to give a chance to introduce Alice. Alice, right? Cause I've been hearing your name for the last couple of weeks. I said, who's this Alice? So, good things. So if you just introduce yourself briefly, that would be nice. Thank you, Mayor.
Nice to hear, thank you. Um, I'm Alice Birch. I, as Luis mentioned, I've been here for about six weeks. However, I have about twenty-five years in public service, finance, budgeting from the city of San Jose previously. I've worked over seven and a half years in their budget office doing all of their operating and capital improvement projects and forecasting. I've done grants management for about five years and we started a new unit after COVID in our finance department in San Jose. I was the division manager in charge of setting up the unit and becoming, writing policies and procedures for grants management citywide, providing citywide oversight of over about a billion dollars in grant revenue.
That's impressive, that's very impressive. Welcome. Thank you. We're very fortunate to have you here.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you are. You're looking at roughly fifty years or fifty-five years of experience of budgeting in large and small municipalities. My only experience not budgeting was in San Jose. Didn't really do too much budgeting in San Jose. But my prior experience, I did a lot of budgeting. So with that, let's get started.
I think you did have. All right. Agenda, we've already gone through this, you men. Okay, so we're gonna start with key accomplishments and council priority areas. And if you could go to the next read, we've actually divided this up a little bit differently today. And so what we're doing is really focusing on the council priority areas that you as city council have previously voted on and approved. And so we're giving you a listing of our achievements and our accomplishments in those particular areas. And this slide gives you community wellness and open space. As you saw a couple of weeks ago, or yeah, it was two weeks ago, that you saw the community survey. You'll see a little bit of that, a little redux of that later today. I've grabbed a couple of slides from that. We got great satisfaction levels from the city services and programs in the community. We also dispersed American Rescue Plan Act for Social Services, two hundred seventy-five thousand in childcare subsidies and three hundred thousand in nonprofit mental health grants. And also we had various cultural events. We were awarded forty youth scholarship events. And, excuse me, youth scholarship supporting sports, community service and academic improvement. And then we also provided some kids, so kids can do, go into mathematics, which is a good thing to do, and technical areas. Next slide is neighborhoods and housing. So these are the achievements that we've done and the accomplishments. If you wanna stop and ask about any of them, please feel free to do so, okay? Of course, we can really, and Jay can speak to this more if you wish. She completed phase one, the public draft of phase two of the comprehensive zoning ordinance update. We passed the solicitation ordinance to protect residents' choice and privacy, essentially no solicitation. And we provided that. This was before last year. And then we administered about eight hundred thousand community development block grants, so about eight hundred sixty-five residents. Economic development and job growth. We collaborated with community partners on the AI Made Simple Workshop. That picture is from that workshop. We launched a Milpitas Historic Downtown Business Association. We hosted the eighth annual manufacturing day. We completed two storefront improvement grant projects and have two additional projects underway. And we dispersed over one point eight million grant funding to over four hundred businesses. And still no questions. Okay, let's keep going. Public safety, we responded to four thousand nine hundred forty-seven emergency medical service calls for service and participated in twenty wildland fire state mutual aid deployments. And thank goodness, everybody got back safe. So thank you. Thank you for your service. Adopted the citywide traffic safety plan and got a grant, a significant one. We implemented an online police transparency portal that's accessible to the public. And then we acquired a new mobile emergency operations center. We usually show that picture with, but we thought we'd give the ambulance a show today. And then a combination of environment and transportation and transit, those are also two priority areas for the council. We completed design for McHale's well and Dempsey waterline replacement. We expect to have the awards for those in spring. We have secured over two hundred thousand dollars to implement SB thirteen eighty-three for cast recycled. And we earned multiple honors at twenty twenty-four Capio Epic Awards and APTA for Milpitas Smart Information and Communications Campaigns. And those were the, the videos and the communications that we submitted that were essentially so good that they gave us an award, a couple of awards. Those are pretty big, pretty important. And then we provided, and this is a really a listing of the smart services. So the smart is the on-demand microtransit service over two hundred and thirty-three stops within, in Milpitas. And you can see we've served a lot of people, thirteen thousand, over close to fourteen thousand regular passenger rides, close to eight thousand senior passenger rides, seventy-six hundred or so low-income passenger rides and fifteen thousand new passenger rides. So there's been a lot of usage of that system. Of course. Pardon me? Yeah, Jay, you can speak to them?
Yes, twenty twenty-four numbers.
And let's go on. And then our general governance administrator headed by our City Managers Office. We, of course, successfully extended Measure F and J, essentially getting the message clear and, clear and simple from the voters that they like what we're doing with their money. Conducted the November fifth, twenty twenty-four election for mayor and two council member races. Those were featuring ten candidates and there was one ballot measure, which of course was Measure J, which extended Measure F. Launched transition from legacy systems to modern ERP HRIS. And that's going from our old twenty to thirty-year-old system to a brand-new, modern workflow-based cloud system called Tyler. Completed the audiovisual technology upgrade of council chambers and committee room, which is very nice. Maintained approximately a seven percent vacancy rate, which is unheard of in Silicon Valley for municipal municipality. Results in thirty-five hires in the first six months of the fiscal year. This, the HR team also helped the city get selected for a loanee. Is that how I said it? College Junior Leadership Academy placing the three interns for a seventy-five-hour project. We got a clean audit, which is very good also indeed. And we established a business-to-business accounts such as Amazon Prime for competitive pricing and efficiency in city procurement. Of course. On the HRIS system. How long, how long will that be? How long will it take when everybody's on board with that? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. We are going to start the build of the system in July. We're doing some prep work for that now. And then we'll be implemented by July of twenty twenty-six.
July of twenty?
Twenty twenty-six, so it'll take a year to implement. Finance is happening right now, if you recall. They'll go live with the finance modules July one of this year. And then we'll follow right behind them in another area. Yeah. It's exciting. Thirty, seventy years of never HRIS system.
So do we get, do they, does that company offer or whoever, do they offer technical assistance to us? Like, we have a hard time figuring something out? Yeah. Yes, it is. And both now and the development and ongoing support, as with all our software systems.
I'll also offer along those lines, Mayor, that Berry Dunn is the organization that's helping us project manage the implementation of the system. And they've been instrumental in our technical capacity to be able to implement and build the system. So I think between the two, we'll have good support.
And that's the average time, the timeline, that's two years is average? Point, point, six? It's actually short.
It's pretty expeditious.
That's actually really short. All right, thank you. Mayor, Councilmember Chua.
Thank you. For the follow-up question on the same item, the same issue. Don't we have a, when we bought this package, don't we have already maintenance agreement with them? With the people that we bought the software from?
That, the legacy system?
No, the new one.
This one?
The ERP.
Yes, we, we entered into, well, it's not quite maintenance because it's not fully deployed.
Yeah, when it's fully deployed, there should be a contract to maintain the system. And that's where the technical, the technical Q and A, you know, if you have questions, you can call them.
Yes.
Do we have that? How long is the contract?
The contract, I think, is for three years, if I remember right, once deployment happens. So, but once goes live, it should be three years. And I think it's the same for human resources as well. It's either three or five that I remember. Yeah, it's, it's at least three, cause those generally are, are in their subscription base. So basically, you just keep renewing them, as we do with.
And that starts on July first, when you go live?
It'll be for, it'll be for the financial module, the maintenance of that will start. And then when HR goes live and human resources goes live, that's when their maintenance contract will take in. Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Lam.
Yeah. Can you educate us why it takes that long?
It's not long.
Yeah, can you educate us why?
Oh. Essentially, what is, actually, this, this city, I can't speak to this city, but I will speak to other cities. But my understanding is, is that this act work actually started about three years ago. You have to do, if you're not going to just lift your business processes from your old system and just plop them into a new system that makes it marginally faster but not better, you go through a systems evaluation. I was not here for that, so I can't really speak to it. Essentially, this, we had a, the city of Milpitas had a consultant come in and go through all the business processes, effectively workflow those out. And that takes time. Essentially, you're looking at, how do I pay a check? How do I bill? How do I procure something? How do I issue a purchase order? How do I write a check? And that all takes time. They come in and then they do what's called, they call it series. And it's basically, it's kind of like layered learning. So they come in, you go through, you know, getting a contract, you go through the procurement process to select a product. Then you go through the procurement process again to select Berry Dunn is a project manager, because we don't have that skill set in-house. Then you go through the layers of building it, layer upon layer upon layer. The first later, the first layer is just learning about this system, cause it's brand new. Have you seen it? And then you go through, how does it work? How does the database work? Then you start populating the data. Then you start validating the. Then you start populating the data, then you start validating the data, so it's an iterative process and it does take long, and I will tell you that two years is very fast. I was with an organization that was a bit larger and they were working on it for six years. So you're going into every single financial transaction and figuring out how it's done and how you can do it better.
In the case of HR, we've never had a system. So, in addition to building processes that we want to have happen in an efficient and effective way, right? Those are all brand new, and, and then you're having to learn the system and create the system in a way that. Respects some of our uniqueness here at Milpitas, and so it's a, it's a delicate process, I've done this three to. About three times in higher education and it took three to five years. To implement those systems, that has to do with making sure that things are accurate, but also things are integrated, so you do something over here and it has an impact over here. Which is great, that's what we want, right, so we have one source of truth, one source of data. An agreed-upon way about how we do business processes that don't involve email and spreadsheets, right? Um, and so that takes time, uh, and to me, it's worth it when we're trying to improve the process. We're trying to teach people how to use it effectively so they adopt it and don't work outside of it, um, and then continue to optimize it for a couple of years after. I don't know if that helps, we're happy to share more afterwards.
You just think about it this way, the system is going to be in place for anywhere, people always say they're replaced in about twenty years. I don't think I've ever worked anywhere that has replaced it until about thirty, so this system, all these processes, the way that this work happens. Is going to be in place for thirty years, so we're making a significant investment of time and we're amortizing it over thirty years. Because it's, it's, it's critical that we get this right, and also important thing, thank you. It's also important to understand that we're also cleaning the data. So there's a lot of cleansing of data, because there's information in lots of different places in Milpitas, and this isn't unique. This is true in lots of organizations that change from one system to the other, especially when they're moving from a legacy system. And then thirty years later to this, so this is frankly, it's very fast.
Thank you.
So now, you've seen this before, this is a couple of slides that we grabbed out of the Milpitas Community Survey that you saw for FM three last week, the week before. To go through this, this is the survey methodology, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, because you've already seen this. But these are key numbers that I want you to focus on and the numbers that we got. Overall, Milpitas are pretty happy with Milpita, eighty-six percent is pretty good, they like eighty, overall quality of work. Overall, they're pretty happy as well with our city services, it's seventy-eight percent, and our city government, so that's, you know, that's not just of us, but of the council. That's seventy-one percent, and though their biggest concern is the cost of housing. It's very serious, and then seventy-four percent feel similarly, similarly concerned about inflation and rising costs. And I've got to be honest with you, we're, we're not a city that can help much with that. But we can help in other ways, in indirect ways to address some of those concerns.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's not just, uh, it's a regional.
It's regional.
Actually, it's nationwide, state nationwide.
Yeah.
Uh, and we do have programs like MAP, a business assistant program to, that can help alleviate some of that stress.
Yeah, yeah, we do. Okay, and then this is numbers comparing them to prior years, we can go on to the next slide. And then this, once again, this is just more information about what's the issues that concern residents, and it's the cost of housing, which we. Have little to no control about unless we, unless we do more affordable housing, and then inflation and rising costs, which once again, we don't have a lot of control over. Next slide, please. This is how the residents would spend city dollars, this is not how we spend city dollars. And I'll actually have a, we'll have a slide summary to you when we put together the budget that will show you how we are proposing that we would say. But this is just, if you had, they went out to the residents and over six hundred folks. It was a statistically valid survey, and they basically asked them, if you had uh, one hundred dollars, how would you spend it? And this is the way that you spend, looking at the council priorities at the bottom. Of course, it's always public safety, but it's really interesting, there isn't like huge amount of anywhere else, they're pretty fairly divided except for. That, let's go to the next slide, and then the big picture takeaways, residents like, they continue to like living in Milpitas, the cost of it, living issues are top of mind. This, the third bullet was interesting, most also feel that their regular retail needs can be met in Milpitas, so. What's that means is sales taxes are hopefully staying in Milpitas. There's fewer or feel that violent property crime is increasing, and at the same time, there's many. Times where public, issues related to public safety bubbled up, particularly this is a priority, so even though their dollars spent really didn't reflect it, they still continue to talk. Next slide, please. And then their impressions of city government, that's us around the table, the solid majorities continue to feel that city government is doing a good job. They gave us that message very clearly when they approved measure J so strongly. Uh, most feel, also feel good about the general provision of city services and satisfaction levels for positive for individual services. Most important, especially the ones that are most important to residents, such as nine eleven emergency responses or systems. And dissatisfaction was once again affordable housing policies and street conditions, so there's, these are areas of future focus and. And once again, when we start a review over the next year and a half together, we will start looking at which services. Are, are the community is really looking for, and taking down to that. Economic outlook and broad factors, I'm going to preface this by saying I am not an economist, I took plenty of economy classes, but I am not an economist. So I'm stealing shamelessly from others in this. But these are sort of from just general readings, what you think, actually, when you look at the economy, this statement was coming not from December. Which I thought it was, this is actually something that came in February, the people are still pretty, they're pretty positive about United States economy. They still think it's okay, but there is, there are certainly a lot of issues, I mean, there's a lot of federal policy uncertainty. And people are concerned, they're not sure what's going to happen with inflation, they're not sure what's going to happen as a response to the tariffs. There was another flurry of policy decisions, especially in the courts. Today, they're also going to be sort of challenging the future, and so I think anybody who's able to sort of predict. Any reliability, what's going to happen in the next six months, forget about two years, is, is really betting on the come. Um, in the Bay Area, the economy is improving slowly, if you could. It, we, uh, it's improving, there are still challenges, um, so high, high housing costs. There aren't a lot of transactions, and this is why our property tax is so slow to grow, because we're limited at the state level by those. Last century, last mid-century state laws that were passed limiting how much you can incre- increase uh, tax, property taxes, I think. And those were back in the mid, mid last century, those are really pretty old and those still, still. Those chickens are coming home to roost, um, as far as, as far as those limitations at the state level, and then the opportunities. So since, the only time that you reset the basis of a house, as far as the price is concerned, if you buy a house fifty years ago and I'm making numbers up. It's a hundred thousand dollars fifty years ago and it's a million, maybe I'm not making numbers up, and it's a million dollars today. That price we collect on, on that, that a hundred thousand dollars, two percent at a time. The, the property tax just goes up a little bit at a time. And then we only get that new basis, that new million-dollar house, when that house changes hands. And has to change hands in a particular way, because there's also some laws that have exemptions for us to basically get better property tax. So this is why Alex can't say enough about living, about employment lands, about preserving employment lands, because we really have to have. That balance between the necessary housing and also employment lands, because property tax, well, it is our biggest generator. Of dollars, on the long term, we really want to keep, you know, sales tax and other taxes coming in. Because those, those are the ones that can keep those businesses coming in to provide us those goods, just. Stop being so dependent on a really slow-moving revenue.
Do you keep track, do you keep, keep track of how many people have sold their home? You've mentioned that we don't get that revenue until the, it changes hands, you know, the ownership, the property taxes. Do, do we, um, have someone that keeps track of all that in our city?
We have, um, we have, uh, uh, someone who does property tax consulting for us, HDL. And our proposal, if the council was willing, was to sometime either in mid-March or likely early April, April first. To bring those consultants into council to both talk about property tax and sales tax. And essentially provide an education for everybody, I certainly need one about. Not just how, how we collect property tax, how we can, where it goes and how it's divided up, and you'll get a little big shot of this in a minute or so. But also to talk about sales tax and the outlook on both those property tax and sales tax.
But I was thinking about the trends, um, my personal opinion, I think, no, very few people are selling their homes, because it's going to cost more to. To find another place, so people are just holding on to their homes, and again, if they exchange, exchange. Deals, that's when we get the new property tax kicks in, but we're not getting that new property tax. So yeah, I agree that we need to make sure that we keep our, uh, industrial, light industrial lands, because we can't depend. Can't depend just on property taxes.
It's too slow growing revenues.
We have to be, uh, have a diverse. Yeah, I remember my parents bought their home in Milpitas nineteen sixty-four for sixteen thousand dollars.
How much is it worth today?
Not no more!
Look it up in Zillow, yeah.
That was long, anyway.
Yeah, yeah. That's sample of ten, you know.
Those days are gone.
Thank you, Mayor, um, CPI is. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Gary?
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
So what is the relevance of, uh, the survey we did in December to, uh, protection, for the ten-year protection budget that we're trying to do now?
We're actually going to use, I, it actually, thank you, thank you for the question, Vice Mayor. We're actually going to use that to start our discussions with the community, because as you all know, during our briefing sessions, we have some challenging times ahead of us. And in order, really, what a budget is, is a reflection of what the community wants, it should be, the best budget reflects exactly what the community wants in a reasonable way. Um, and then strategic, strategically funding those services the community wants. So that survey is an entree into starting those discussions, we're going to be going back out. Our plans are start going back out to the community again and say, we're going to have to make some hard choices and want you to help, we want you to help us make those hard choices. Because it shouldn't be on the heads of anyone here to be.
Good, good, um, I thought you said that, right, so here's the question. We've been looking at the budget since, uh, last time, right, you will have a presentation later at seven P M. So how is the survey that we learned reflected to your ten-year projection now? Did we satisfy what you just have said, this is what the community wants? If you look at the numbers on the production, uh, in the next ten years, did we really, did we really incorporate? The prioritization of the community?
No, because we didn't have those numbers then, but it, it does inform us with sort of, uh, it, it does inform us with. Cohorts, that's not the right word, bundles of services. So we know that housing, for example, I'm going to make this, we, we know that housing is important, so what do we do, what can we do about housing? Not a lot, but what can we do about affordable housing? We know that public safety is important, what can we do about that? We know that streets are important, what can we do about that? So you take the information that you started and those are the starts of your conversation.
So since this is a budget, I'm, I'm looking for a number, you know, if we can put a number, a dollar amount on, uh, what we have learned in December. Are we really putting it in the ten years, let's say, uh, even sample, say, uh, city services. How much, and, and this is number two, I believe, on the survey, so how much dollar are we putting? To city services to satisfy the community's prioritization? For example, quality of life, how much are we putting on each street, on each park? The dollar amount, are we responsive to what the community wants for the survey we had in December?
I, I, that's a difficult question to ask, is whether we're responsive today, we are responsive in the fact that the survey says. The services that in general they're happy with our services, but once we get start down to the, do you want, what do you want done? Do you want all your parks' lawns to be mowed, or do you want this part to be mowed, do you want, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to give you PTSD. Do you want a pickleball court in this one, versus this park versus another park? And those are the questions that we're going to start asking, because those are the services that people are asking for. The community has said in general from those services, that they're generally satisfied with the services that we provide, that's the level of service that we're currently at. But as you can see, and you'll see in a minute, given the numbers, we are not able to responsibly continue that portfolio of services. So we're going to have to make some hard choices, and I think that it's, that part of having, making those hard choices is to bring the community back. Again, is, you like these services, you were concerned about public safety, is there anything that you would be okay with not doing anymore? You like these services, you like the recreational community services, is there anything you're okay about not doing anymore? And if we get lots of responses, we have to do everything, then we're going to have to make the hard decisions.
Hard decisions based on available dollars that we have.
We're almost limited by dollars, we are a service business.
Okay, so what's the percentage of, uh, this community benefit? Uh, on, uh, ten-year protection as to other expenses, other expenditures?
We haven't gotten to that, that detail is not here today, but we have presented in, in an oncoming question, so we will be starting to present. Those items in those community priority areas, which we haven't been able to do before. But as we break down the budget more and more, we'll really start segregating them into council priorities. And really start focusing on this, this service belongs here. This service is just, this is.
It just had some, ten percent of it, five percent of it. So that when we are, are at that, a part of the presentation, we, we have an idea. And we don't remember that I asked the question, how much of the tenure protections devoted to community benefit? We don't have a number yet.
We don't have a number yet, we haven't, we haven't really been tracking it that way, we've been tracking it in sort of. Kind of by departments, kind of by general functions or community service areas, but we haven't really been tracking it by. The council priorities, which should be a reflection of what the community has and the way that the services, the surveys. So that's also going to require us, once again, looking at each of those services and say, what does this do? Sometimes a housing, some, sometimes something that's, it, it's not just in one, not just in one council priority. We just got to sit there and establish that information, it's, it's a matter of going through each and every one of the services that we provide. And seeing where it falls, and if the community still wants it.
All right.
It's, 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 it's not going to be an easy process.
So, I mean, we do have a slide coming up with a pie chart that has percentages on it that shows where the money has been spent. In each of those generals, it's not broken down into specific programs, but it is in general areas, that might be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor.
The customer issue.
Thank you, Mayor. Backing on Vice Mayor's input, can we go back to the slide that shows the dollar? And I re, I, as you implied, I requested this, I think, a few council meetings ago. This is what the city wants, and I hope this kind of helped me understand, I also with the Vice Mayor's feedback. I want to see, even if you don't have the data, you can use the data for six months. And look at how much we did we spend so far on public safety. For public safety, I know we have a budget of close to forty million for fire. And forty-three million for, for police, and that is like eighty million plus already. That's a big chunk of our thing.
But that's not the message that we got, that's not.
I know, that's what I'm saying, if you can make, on our next meeting, come up with that. Come up, that would help us with a question of Vice Mayor about. How much did we address the, the, the needs of the community?
The perception of community, the, the other important thing is that we cannot just, um. It's sort of like we have to eat our vegetables before we can have dessert, some things are legal that we have to do, that we're required.
I understand that, but those are the ones that, you need to break, the way you broke this stuff, I mean, the survey. We need to address that the way it was presented.
Okay.
And that's all I'm saying, we need that data, whether it's six months of twenty twenty-four or nine months of twenty twenty-four. Let's go with that and see where, where we're going, we don't know.
Yeah.
So, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Some more, just a couple of other points, uh, the unemployment rate is actually getting better. We, it went down, unemployment, when it goes down, it's good, and then it's better than the national average, and then a couple of. And then a couple of of arcane and obscure points, but things that 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 are important to know. Um, we are having somewhat of a struggle at the federal level regarding tax exempt bonds. And you losing the ability to issue tax exempt bonds is critical to us. Tax exempt bonds make us much more attractive to investors, and remember, we're thinking about going out for a bond for debt issuance. In the next couple of years to fund the forced main work. And so if we use that, uh we immediately become just like everybody else in the market, so that's, uh we've got our lobbyists working on us, we are working. On uh, there's a bunch of, all of us, all the municipalities across the country are working on this issue because it's really rather critical, it's on the congressional. Um and we can go on. Um essentially, this is what the budget development is, this is a little bit different. Uh, because it it basically is the weaving together of the economic account with long term planning. The fiscal policies that you, every year when you appropriate the budget and that action, you also adopt the fiscal policies. And then the fiscal reserves would play, and you put that in, it becomes, you uh. You put that together, looking at, making sure that you maintain fiscal resilience, sustainability, and you come up with a balanced budget. That's just a graphic, just to point it out very simply, let's keep going. And now the meat of the matter, which is the preliminary F Y twenty six thirty five ten year general fund forecast. Um, we do have a structural deficit, we are not, unlike any other municipality likely, many most values in the country. Um, San Jose, they just did their presentation, they're pretty short as well. Uh, the thing I will say to you about this is I'm not, I will uh be honest with you, I'm not comfortable more than five years out. Because it doesn't, it doesn't really make sense to me, that's two elections, that's generally a presidential change or. Pot potential change, policy changes, as you can see, it's happening now. And for me, it feels always a little nonsensical to do a past five years, that's what's been done here. My perception is really just to be looking at this year with our mid year that's coming to you later this evening. And then looking at uh twenty twenty five, twenty six, the next three years. I will tell you that the reserves that we have, and there's a slide on reserves and a couple of slides. Um, if we did absolutely nothing, did absolutely nothing, and kept the level of service that we have today, please remember. Their expenditures are at the level of service that we have, that you appropriated it for F Y twenty four twenty five. We would be fine, pretty much up to twenty third. It, but we would be spending all of our one time money, this is completely and totally ineffective using one time money. This is not any, this has probably been happening with the city for, I'd say certainly pre COVID. So this is not me, so it's probably the first time you've been, it's been shown to you in this manner. But um I would say to you that we should be focusing on this year, finishing out the year. And then next year, and then really looking at rebuilding over the next year and a half and being prepared for twenty six, twenty seven. It doesn't mean that we're not gonna take some short term actions in order to to just maintain it, just. Just to be conservative, but I would tell you that I really think that that this is an opportunity for the city. To really stand back and look at those portfolio services and position itself for the future. So it's not just about reducing expenses, it's also about finding other revenues and finding other revenue sources, there's opportunities to do that. And there's also an opportunity to basically look at how we spend money, because we do a lot of pay go here. With uh capital projects, which is losing cash. And I would, I would posit that debt is well placed and well issued debt is also appropriate. Because this is when spreading the um the benefit, because the benefit of of anybody. Whenever we make an investment in a capital asset, usually asked for twenty to thirty years, people in the future are benefiting from that asset. So they should also be paying for that asset, and that's how you spread out debt, that's a justification for today. So I'm gonna leave it here for a couple of minutes, and I'm sure everybody has questions.
Costumer Chula.
Thank you, Mayor. I know when we were negotiating for public safety. There is a term that you guys use, and I really want to understand this, one time money. And this is a one time money, and what we're really saying, correct me if I'm wrong, we're using reserve for this.
One time money is not necessarily reserve, one time.
How did we get the three point eight reserve?
One time money is also grants, one time money is that it's something that is not a permanent source of revenue.
Okay, I was break it down, my question. Uh, though, how much money did we take out of reserve? In order to satisfy the contract, the agreement that we have with with police and fire? Do we know?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to look it up, because I don't wanna quote.
Yeah, the reason why I'm asking is, my question is. For something, one way or another, how much, how much money went back to the reserve? After making that contract? Whether it's a grant, whether it's a surplus, whether it's uh whether it's the way we do our. Um, uh, using a different uh methodology to. To save, to invest, like you did one time. So how much money, yeah, how much, how much money taken out, how how much money went back?
Yeah.
If any.
So so we reconcile, on a annual basis, we reconcile the reserves. And you have a waterfall, and I actually have a screenshot of it, but not in pitch detail. That doesn't explain the numbers, but explains the 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 flow of it, can you?
If you don't have the answer, it's okay.
No, no, I don't have the answer, you know, the.
Yeah, it's okay, but next time, please provide.
But I do wanna give you a little bit of information of how the evaluation of reserves happen, and the valuation of reserves happen, it happened when you completely. You completely finished your audit for the year, you're done, that's it, numbers are done, you're fixed, and then you have leftover money. Last year, we had leftover money, and that money went back and replenished the budget, the budget reserve. And the contingency reserve, so we had extra money last year. A lot of times, that money is from vacancies. Or reduction.
Just really not savings, really unused funds.
It is, that's what fund balances is.
But I don't like to call it savings, it's really unused funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we didn't use it.
Yeah, yeah, we we didn't use it and we, it, yeah, so we basically follow the guide, the guidance that the city council gave us for the waterfall. And those buckets are replenished, so, yeah, so they do get replenished, they don't get replenished in the middle of the year, we did do it immediately. We did do some other actions that saved us money, but until that all, all the dust settles after audit, then we do that.
Yeah, whatever, you can provide, that would help.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Any more questions from anyone? We have a Vice Mayor?
All right, I I hope I heard it wrong, or it's right. You said that, is it prudent to just focus on this year and resolve it? And and will take uh the following years as we go?
Uh, no, we we want to do in the next year and a half to make some significant changes so that we don't have this long term. Long term profit challenge. The issue that I have is looking this far out for ten years, the reliability of those numbers with distance and time becomes less and less. But it stills, but but I will say to you that we still have a challenge with right, with our expenditures rising faster than our revenues. And the reason we have that challenge is because we don't have a lot of revenue sources, if you can go to the next one, I think I talked about it. That's just a graphic, you can keep going, okay. This is a picture of our general fund revenues, this is it for us pretty much, we don't have the ability to, we're not accounting.
Understand, so going back to uh Councilmember Chua, last year when we're negotiating with our workforce.
Yes.
You can go uh review the transcript of those meetings, you know, there's already a deficit.
Yes.
And we look at uh individual buckets to fill it up, right? I remember part of uh the city manager's office funds, uh part of the uh, you know. Uh, the unfilled opposition, stuff like that, some waterfall fund and things like that, right? I made a comment last time, and if you go back to uh the uh. That one, you know, if I remember in December, the red starts twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty twenty seven, twenty eight. And now, we're uh uh having at the mid year. It is your projection last December has prematurely went to red to deficit this year, two years, how?
We s- we scrubbed the numbers, we really scrubbed the numbers, I, we are looking for how, we'll tell you how when we get more into it.
No, the thing, the thing, Lucy, you know, it was telling us, we'll get back to you on this, we'll get back to you on this, last December, this is two years positive. And what have we done? What have we looked back last December? Now, we're what, just three months? You're telling us, you're presenting us that there's two years in advance of deficit already from projection last year.
So so Alice is gonna give you the the technical piece behind it, come ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, um so, can't give you every dollar right now, but at least two, two million, about two point two million of that is less revenue. So our sales tax and our property tax is less than what was originally projected. And we get those monies from our consultant, um because they are the subject matter experts. And cities and counties across the state, and probably across the country really, but across the state are seeing the same.
Then if we have a but consultant, if three months ago, they projected this and and it's not.
I I completely understand.
Of everybody is on the same uh boat, wouldn't excuse that consultant where we relied our projection in December. And now, we are uh prematurely having a structural deficit of two years. Here's another question, you know, those numbers going forward, that will triple, you know why? I I raised this this last year as well, when we negotiated with our workforce, we have a standard percentage, right? But everybody knows that that standard percentage is beyond uh uh what we have agreed on on those four. I always say, it's just like a picture, negotiate with fire, negotiate with M E A, but consider the whole picture, this is what happens if you don't. How much over our standard uh uh three percent, you know? Tell me, am I wrong that from uh fiscal year twenty seven all the way to thirty five? We're using the same standard percentage on our workforce.
We are.
Right, so what happens when twenty twenty nine, uh uh public safety comes with ten percent and we approve it? Will build the deficit at triple?
Uh uh again, twenty twenty nine is.
No, my point is, it seems that the formula is deficient.
I I'm I'm not gonna disagree with you that three percent is.
And what are we doing about it?
Well, we have to increase and then see what we need to reduce, to be honest with you. Again, to be, to be clear, I'm not gonna disagree that that two, three percent is not the right number, because it's not. It historic- historically has been not.
Right.
Well, we're gonna put in the right number, it's going to not look as good, and then we need to really start looking at services.
Okay, so we.
We have, we have no choice here.
We have a choice, it's just that we have to 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 have a decisive move here. So what, how are we considering, okay, I I'll follow you for a while, for a minute. How are we considered to fill in three point one million this year? Buckets?
Oh. We we're, our intention is to tap into the reserves, which is the purpose.
All right, with the fifty years combined experience, would tapping on reserves in situations of structural deficit like this?
I would tell you, no, it is not prudent, you've asked me that question months before, and I've always said it is not prudent.
Then why are we tapping reserves?
But, but Vice Mayor, I I ask for your 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 patience here. Simply by, we can't just sit here and say that we can't do anything about it, we can do something about it. But those are certain actions that we're going to have to take, and we have to discuss this with the community. Because at the end of the day, the budget reflects the services that the community wants. We have to make some difficult, forgive me.
Sorry.
We have to make some difficult decisions about those services over the next year and a half. The question becomes is, what can we do right now? What can we do in the future? But I would say to you that without going out to the community and asking them what's most important to them. I think we're going to struggle with just making wholesale decisions that are, that are the services that communities don't care about.
You know, I asked uh the relevance of uh the survey in December, my first question. Because I know the that uh when we uh go forward and project and 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 adopt the budget. You know, those uh responses will be less considered, you know why? Because of the deficiencies within, it's not about not giving them uh uh an extra hour of light in attention. It's not, it's because of the deficiency that we have in the system. Right, it is, right? I I remembered, a part of three point one is the un uh. Right, unmon- no, unmanned, unforeseen expenses of fire, right? We didn't know that, we didn't see that, but we got hit with it, so what will we do? So that when we're talking now, we don't, uh we will not see that we hit, we get hit with the same deficiency February next year. Where's the reserves there? Where's where's the contingency? We didn't know that we're gonna get hit with, what, eight hundred thousand from fire? We didn't know, but now, it's creating a structural deficit.
That's not the only thing that's creating a structural deficit, and that didn't happen because of a single action.
I understand, I and.
But, but, but I, but I get your point, and and I think we all do actually. So we get your point, but again, I'm going to encourage the council to really take a paced approach to this on both revenues. Expenditures, services, because those are the things that cost money, we're a service business.
Problem with that proposition, sorry.
No, no, you're good.
You know. You want us to rely on that without a calculated uh uh, how did? A calculated method to address it, give us time, give us time, maybe a year, a year and a half, give us us, you know. Otherwise, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna decide based on what we know, on the limited information that we know, if you let us wait too long without. Giving us uh a a complete understanding why you need a year, why you need a year and a half.
Because it ta- it's taken us this long to really sit down and really start examining these numbers, we're new. I'm new, I'm I'm new, I've been here ten, ten months.
Heard that last year, that everybody's new, but you know, the fact is, we're here.
But but Councilmember, I'm gonna say another thing, the systems that have been in place in Lupitas are absolutely challenging to deal with. I am a very patient person and I love numbers, and the inability to get to really good solid numbers is absolutely heartbreaking. And a lot of it has to do with the systems that we have, they really don't allow us to have one basic source of truth. So we're looking, they're all different places in the systems, and the systems and the processes, and I don't wanna be called adult people. Because I'm not, but I am gonna blame it on systems. Now, this, this is, it makes it nearly impossible to come up with system with numbers that are reliable, and we have to do this by hand.
Right.
This is the.
Understand, uh we talk about this, okay, so what your plan is, look at at the system. Where there are drops of dollars, right? That we can save to uh to uh, you know, to to patch the structural deficiency. But the the question remains that once, you know, you scour everything in the system and you found four or five million dollars, that's a show. But that's still a one source of fun to cover the projection of structural deficiency.
Yes, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying looking for for coins on the couch is our only approach. We also have to look at the decisions that we make regarding so, regarding employment lands.
Okay.
We have to make conscious decisions every single time when we talk about employment, that's what we're saying. Do I put a house there, or do I put a business there? That's a conscious decision for an ongoing revenue source that sits at the dials.
How about cutting expenditures?
And cutting expenditures is also, is also a way to do that, but cutting expenditures, because we're service business, is not cutting expenditures. The decision is cutting a service, that's fine. And and that's fine, and and this, and this, that's, that's what I'm telling you is we need to take time. Because you're, I I'm, I'm gonna tell you that if you decide to make. From my experience, if you decide to make wholesale cuts, the challenge is going to be. How do you maintain the core businesses that you really, the core services that you really wanna have? Do we know what those core services are? I don't know.
We cannot, probably we do, but we cannot.
If.
Well, seriously, the thing, you know, as a layman as I am, what we're trying to see, I mean, okay, correct me if I'm wrong, the methodology that we're using is. This is the statistics uh for this, and we need the dollar amount for this one. This, we look at buckets to uh to fill in, what we need structurally. But the question remains that that it's only a patch of uh trying to to afford them. To afford them, right? You tell us, okay, we'll scour everything. But those will, whatever you find will only be uh uh. One time dollars.
I would, I would mention to say that they're not. If you're reducing services, the individuals, the the. And forgive me, because again, eighty percent of our dollars are spent to general fund, are 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 touched individuals. We're we're reducing, if we reduce services, but we de facto reducing staff. The question that I have for for the council is how do you want to do those reductions? You wanna do those in a way that are thoughtful, they're strategic in nature, and that reach out to our community that are the most needy. Do we continue to have, um for example. Um, different cost recovery for different programs and recreation and community services, and I'm really sorry for pulling on everybody, but I'm just giving for instance. Do we decide to uh basically. Put a business in a place where we think there would be more housing. There's a lot of competing interests here. But the per- the purpose of really sitting back and thinking about is balancing those interests, so you're not just balancing it for the first three years. But you're balancing it for the future. In reality, Vice Mayor, I will tell you, we are limited in the ways that we can raise money. Because we are not that large a city, we don't have the capability of doing it. We can't raise taxes. We're not the state, not the feds. For goodness sake, we're not even county. But what that means is that we have to be telling our community that that you're gonna have to be satisfied with a smaller portfolio of services. You're gonna have to tell us what that is. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm having a, sorry.
No, no, I I think that, you know, if at the end of the, okay, we wait, but if at the end, you know, as I said, it's a calculated risk. We submit to your proposition that we wait, right? We want uh some light ahead of the dial that if we wait, that your projections uh will. Resolve at least uh, you know, structural deficits going forward. Because if we don't receive that assurance, uh at least on my one vote, I I'd rather decide now.
Yeah.
Can I?
I'm I'm done after.
Okay.
So you're asking six months, six months, six months until April? You're asking six months until April to give us.
So for for me, I I I don't like, it seems like we're just kicking the can down the road and um it's just. We really need need to start making some.
No.
Less, less uh expenses, limit spending in my opinion, but you have a question of.
I I just have some comments. You said you're new. You have thirty years' experience, you have twenty five years' experience, fifty five years' experience. That's not new. That's why you're here. That's why we, you were hired. You're experts, and we rely on you. I just wanna say that. And twenty half years is not acceptable to me, because I see red there. Spenditure is high. Revenue is low. We have to act now, not a year and a half from now. Cutting services. We know, we're the representative of our people, our residents. We are the people. We know, we hear from them, you know, what they want, public safety. Fiscally conservative city, you know, manage our funds wisely. That's what they tell us. Okay, you know, housing we then will not be able to address, but some amenities, quality of life. You don't need to have a survey to do that. We know, we're the people. What is uh the services? We could tell which ones must be done and which ones must be cut. That's the council. Council decides, okay, whether it's wrong or right, then we'll be judged during election time. But those are the main things, public safety, you know, the roads are okay. Fiscally responsible city, making sure we're not in the red for all these years. You know, manage their their tax, their hard earned money wisely. And we need to cut, we need to cut expenditures. What is necessary to address this deficit? We must do now. We can't wait a year and a half. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor, anyone else? We have Councilor Lynn.
Thank you. I hate to be on the side of the table at this moment, but um. I'm glad you are. Thank you.
I have to say this to you, while we have a lot of experience outside, we don't have a lot of experience here. So I just wanna be really, are you gonna say that? Let me, let a council member say that.
That was what I was gonna say.
I just wanna say something. No, I just wanna address that, because that's important. I never, I I've always, you know, I've always praised you, you know, just a few hours. You brought up stuff that I have not seen before, and thank you for that. That's why I rely on your fifty five years of experience, and thank you for being here.
But not, they're not all with me, please don't make me older. I'm sorry.
All right, I I just wanna say, I know managing uh financial. And to have this kind of report is is a complex report. With fifty five years' experience, I understand that. It's elsewhere. You didn't have fifty five years' experience with our city, so this is why it's new to you. And we understand that, and we thank you for bringing this out now so that we can learn together. And I just feel like. Everybody needs to breathe and work together to find the solution. Of where to cut, how to cut, and we're not here to blame. And I I don't like the idea uh my colleagues were saying, negotiations with the public safety. We're not here to say what we did in the past caused this deficit. If it is now, let's work together, see where we can fix the problem instead of. Pointing out it was these or these. So that was just my um. Comment, and we need to find out how to reduce the costs without significantly impacting the operation. Uh and not to create more problems than fixing the problem. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lynn, anyone else have any more comments? So uh for my uh putting in my two cents, we do need to take some action. And that action is to me is we need to reduce our expenditures. That means prioritizing what is really important, what is, you know, what is something that can not, it's not that important. It's prioritization. And I think you guys are gonna be, we're working on that. Uh again, we need to take action. I know all cities have, after COVID, a lot of cities have stru- uh structural deficits. Um ours, thank God, ours is not as bad as uh like Oakland or. But uh but we need, we do need to be proactive, uh making sure that we're uh fiscally responsible. And that means uh watching our expenditures and also bringing in opportunities for revenue building. As uh Councilor Chu has constantly been saying, we need to start looking to see where we can generate revenues. Uh I think those are the two areas where we need to really, you know, hone in on, and uh and we're looking to you, because you're the experts. To find out what, you know, where we can cut. But yeah, we we're, because we're not happy looking at that red, it's just kinda. But yeah.
But I I will say to you, beca- because the reason that we ask developers to contribute. And we ask those who can contribute is to help with providing the services to our to our community. And so we just need to be. We we will be bringing you, for example, we will be proposing a business tax uh revitalization is what I'm gonna call it for now. But that costs money, and that's an investment of really looking at examining what a business cost structure. And and re reimagining of what the business, business tax license is is here in up in Lopitas. It's like nothing at anywhere in the area. It's it's terribly low. We need to really examine our fees, and we're going through a lot, a significant fee study now.
When will that kick in?
Uh, the business licenses, we are probably gonna start looking at that, I think.
We're tracking towards the November twenty twenty six ballot, but we'll have a discussion with the city council this year regarding options. And ask for your concurrence after that for a next step, um as we head on next year, so. So that that revenue, if that's successful, that revenue would kick in um in January twenty twenty seven.
So, um, yeah, you guys, I guess, I was just thinking, do you, do you have like a task force in the city that. Finds areas where we can generate, or I'm I'm not sure how you're going to approach that.
We're just gonna sit down.
You guys just all get together and brainstorm?
Basically, we're having collaborate collaborative talks with with all of our our colleagues. We just gotta do it.
Because, you know, uh, you know, I'm I'm thinking, you know, of hiring freeze, thinking, you know, I don't want to go the other way. I wanna make sure that we have a balanced budget and not have a structural deficit that's really. And we're just kicking it, we're just kicking the can down the road. That's all we're doing. And that's not, that's not okay. We have to really uh take the bull by the horns and. Just take, you know, take some action, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for that feedback. And and I wanna assure you that we're, um. I hear what you're saying about not wanting to kick the can down the road, and you heard that in multiple versions from all of you, and we completely agree. Um and, you know, we're definitely taking this feedback in tonight, and there'll be, as as Finance Director Lewis mentioned. There'll be other briefings of um with you all, more discussions, study sessions with you all as we proceed in the next few months. And we may still end up proposing a strategy to utilize reserves in twenty twenty five, twenty six. But per Vice, what Vice Vice Mayor Barbara D. O. mentioned, you will kinda wanna. See more um action from us regarding concrete milestones and schedules to make sure we're headed down that right path. Because we can't be back in this, having the same conversation next year. So we we hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
We have a customer in?
Yes, so if you're gonna take the feedback and and bring it back, um. You know, look into business opportunities and projects that we can defer or respond to the future. Dates.
So the C P will be coming back to you.
Yeah, it's prioritization.
So we have to have more presentation right now, if you like me.
Is that the last uh?
That was the hardest part.
Yeah, I'll just one short comment. It's uh something you said earlier really bothers me. Um, you said we don't know what the residents wants. That really bothers me. We we do know what the residents wants. And then, and the city should know, the city spends so much money on surveys, so we shouldn't say that.
I apologize, I didn't intend for that you all didn't know. I'm always, um, I I guess I'm thinking down to the service and I'm always saying. Does everybody want, I will just apologize and let go of that, but thank you, sir.
I just wanna add to that, yeah, we do definitely know what they want, um but one thing we haven't had a discussion with the residents yet is what are their priorities? In light of a potential structural budget deficit, linking those two conversations together is something we definitely want to have with them. Oh, when we, oh, sorry, one of the things we haven't talked to our residents about is the context of their priorities. When faced with potential budget deficits in the future. And so that's something that is, as we continue. Um along in this budget process and in our next budget process, we'll definitely want to, as as part of our community engagement. Have that discussion with them, but you are, you're correct, we definitely have a lot of data on the residents' priorities, as well as information from you all who. Knocked on everyone's door.
So does that mean that you'll do another survey? Because they're, and and because they're pretty expensive.
Yeah, not not. Mayor, not necessarily, we're not planning, sorry, it seems like my mic was cutting out, but we're not planning on a statistically valid survey um in the next few months. But there is a, there is a community outreach that happens with every budget process, um community meetings, and we would. We're planning on doing that as part of this budget process as well.
Anyone else have any comments?
Okay. Okay, let's take a slide, uh, the next one. This is just a demonstration of which already have, uh eighty percent of our general fund dollars is in salaries and benefits. And let's keep going, forecasting assumptions, this is, and uh essentially, property tax revenue, we only, yeah. Fifteen point two, yeah. And so, thank you, Alice, for helping me. Um, yeah. There's nothing, essentially, when we bring in, a- and again, forecasts or forecasts. It's all they are. They they, you know, we, they do the best they they can with the information that they have today.
Takes a big chunk, huh?
Schools districts do very well. That's all I'll say. And so they do very well, but. Um, we have fewer real estate transactions happening, that's fewer, as you referred to, before to, before Mayor Montana. With people are just staying in their houses, their mortgages are the blow, there, they can't move anywhere else, and where will they go? The supposition is is that the baby boomers will be moving out in the next ten to fifteen years, but who knows, again. Um, and then, you know, we have some reassessments going on that may affect us. In other words, people who are going to the county assessor and saying, my house no longer has its value. I don't know how that's gonna work out, but we do have some some reductions, you know, potential reductions, and we'll keep you advised. Um, and then, of course, there's this um litigation that's still pending, that's basically. About two million a year that we have to put aside based on pending litigation that we're having with the state. Um, essentially, they are saying that the monies that are given to charter schools should should. That the, that the uh, that the money that's, that the municipalities are receiving as part of that excess year out. Should be going to charter schools, and so we're putting it aside in case we lose that litigation. That litigation's pending, we have no idea when it's gonna be done. We just don't, and so we're just pretty innocent. So next slide. So that's our number one, source of money, number two is sales use. And basically, we're those little, the dollar point two five of nine dollars. Nine point three seven five. So that's all we get. Everybody else gets a whole bunch.
And it might go lower because of the gas, the gas tax, right? Because now there's a lot of electric vehicles, so. Restructuring now, they might take that away.
Yes, yeah, I think with the state projections, over the next ten, ten, about ten years from now, the gas tax portion that we're getting is um planning on going way down. So the state is looking at models to potentially restructure that tax based on vehicle miles traveled as opposed to how much gasoline someone uses. So we're we're staying on top of that um as well.
Next slide. Um, hotel, our our number three is is hotel or T O T, transient, transient occupancy tax. We're, we're hoping to see that go up next year. We have a couple of special events we hope to benefit from. Even though we're not a Santa Clara city or San Jose, we expect some people will be saying, well, Peter, some will see something, there's a lot of special events. Um, but they still, numbers are still pretty low, pre pandemic, people are still not traveling the way they used to. Um, charges for service might mainly be user regulatory fees, primarily the recreation services, and we are currently going a citywide fee review. And that's, uh, they visited with a lot of the departments so far, and uh those have been good discussions, and we continue to have those.
So, um. I know the city of New Orleans, you know, with the Super Bowl, they made, I think, four hundred million or something like that. I I really feel that we need to start, I don't, I don't know where, where, who's in charge of that, is it uh?
Talk to for to Alex.
You're in charge of the Super Bowl. Uh, marketing and, and then, uh, where are we at, if you want, where, what stage are we in? Because we only have one year and it, and the clock is. Because we only have one year and the and the clock is ticking.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Alex Andrade. For the record, we are, today, we had conversations with our economic development team. We've reached out to Lynn Rice uh this weekend in regards to getting in front of Great Mall. So there's conversations that are going to start happening. I would.
When, when are they going to start happening?
Could be this week or next week. I I would temper expectations related to revenues coming in from those events. I think it's fantastic if our hotels do really well, as well as our restaurants, and I think they will. But just based on previous experience in twenty sixteen when the Super Bowl was here, as I mentioned a few weeks ago, the majority of the revenues actually took place in San Francisco.
Right, we know, yeah.
It could be that the same thing happens again. But nonetheless, the Office of Economic Development will be working with various departments here and uh our hotels and restaurants.
I'm just curious, do you already have a plan in place?
We do not.
Okay, because we really need to, I mean, I was, I was speaking to Mayor Lisa Gilmore, and it seems like San Jose is taking the lead. I mean, they're really, they're really doing a lot, so.
Yeah.
I would expect that from our city if we want to generate some of that revenue and be part of that. I mean, like, as I mentioned, the city of New Orleans at their last Super Bowl, they made four hundred million. And all the cities in this area should be um benefiting from that. But it all depends on how each city, you know, what, how much energy and effort they put into this. So I'm hoping that you come up with a plan and and start moving on it.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Vice Mayor?
Okay, so we're looking at buckets. Uh, maybe it's time to look at revenue sources too and look at the protection for uh T O T, even if the forecast is a little bit higher from next last year to this year, it's still four percent below what we have budgeted. So what else can can we do on that side? Uh, we we continue to look for uh one-time sources or waterfall sources, as we call them. But what are we doing with regards to sales tax, T O T? The uh public tax, it's gone. So those two could be focused on something like selling milpitas, you know, I I go vacation, you know how I do it? I Google and then what good place it is, what's best to eat in there, and that's how most people uh uh choose where to visit and and where to eat. Maybe that's something that that we need to do. Sell milpitas. We have a very good I T department. We have a very talented economic development director. Oh, let's push it. I'll dance, me and William will dance for it.
And I'm not saying, man. Please don't. Please don't dance.
Anything to maybe, but yeah, uh, kidding aside, I think, let's, let's see what we can do, you know, with milpitas, very beautiful. You know, I was just, I think, talking to to someone about the Adobe. I was asking, hey, we spent one point six million rebuilding that as there've been visitors, you know? We have a lot of restaurants by uh MacArthur Ranch. Just sell it.
If we just Charmaine Angelo to um, maybe if you want to add anything about some of the videos that, you know, she works with our professional team to create.
Yeah. Hey, council member. Um, so Vice Mayor, regarding your comment, like, one of the projects, and you may have heard about it, we're working on a public service announcement. Think of it as a commercial for Alviso Adobe. So we have lined up a couple of different initiatives. And if you recall, we talked about the Mopita's brochure, which will showcase like our food scene. So we have several initiatives in place, but one of the things in the pipeline is a video commercial for um Alviso Adobe and working closely with the recreation team.
Social media will ask, Tony, each of us has a very uh figure uh social media accounts, right? Top, top anything, top anything to sell the city.
Yep.
And then, uh, side by side, uh, we looked at internally how we could, and maybe come April, you know, we not only lessen that uh structural deficit, but uh and not only that we have found pockets, but we have found uh ways to, you know, to project D O T and sales tax, as I said, you know, property taxes are losing battle, so D O T and sales, what else?
If I could just quickly res- respond to sales tax, staff has been working diligently for the last five, six, seven months, working with potential new business coming into town. It'll get in front of you on March fourth under a tax sharing agreement. And so what you would consider is a incentive uh agreement with this particular company. And it could generate, depending on how you all vote, but it could generate significant sales tax revenues to the cities.
So, so I just want to piggyback on Vice Mayor's comments. We do have, uh, we have so many great things in Milpitas. We have two golf courses. We have the horseback riding. We have two Adobes. We have the Big Dog Winery. We have so, and we have Great Mall. We have so many great things, but we're not promoting it or for, and I did, uh, I was at the airport with I guess, uh, last year, when, when, at one time, I noticed they had the little brochures, you know? So even just having that, and and what I love yours is the e-commerce. That's what we really need. We need our e-commerce because tourists, when they come, they they do. They see, they look to see what, what does this city have to offer? So, um, so I'd like Alex, maybe you can, well, city manager, to go look into that. So that would be great, so.
That's all. I I I thought of something. Look, then should be the days when somebody asks you in the airport, where are you from? Don't say San Jose, you know, because they will all, hopefully, we put milpitas in the back. It's milpitas, oh, that that nice city, uh, uh, just in between Fremont and San Jose, because that's always the case, you know, somebody asks you, where are you from? You say, oh, it's in San Jose or San Francisco. And let's create a name for for Milpitas.
So.
Uh, customer.
I just want to say, great ideas on that one. I think you should come up with, uh, the director, Alex. You need to have a plan. That's where we'll all start. Without a plan, we're going nowhere. And I couldn't think of one thing. It doesn't have to be expensive, a video or something like that. It could be like a TikTok of all the council members pleading, pleading to the audience, saying, please come to Milpitas, or all the directors at one time, you know, something funny, something inexpensive. It doesn't have to be, you know, I saw, um, Mayor Mahan, this this last two weeks, he's been on the different channels promoting at San Jose for the, for the events happening a year from now. We have to do that.
Yeah. Can I make a comment? Um, thank you. Thank you for, um, your thoughts, for sharing your thoughts, um, council member too. But in terms of branding our city, so there are different ways of messaging, so the bite-sized TikTok messages are memorable and funny, so that's good. But at the same time, as Vice Mayor mentioned, we need to make Milpitas, like, put a spotlight on the map. So in addition to that, like, when we talk about high-quality videos, we need good equipment, good video content, which we currently do not have, and that's why we rely on.
That's no excuse to me. Anything that markets the city, I think, is good.
No, I'm just.
You don't have to have the equip of fancy equipment. Be creative.
Right. No, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying it's a combination of multiple efforts.
Thank you for your feedback.
See, it took sixty million for Mayor Man to do TikTok. Us, it's free. You know, so so let's do it. Let's do a exposure.
Yeah, let's be creative.
That would be great. Be creative. Be funny.
And because, you know, that's the whole point is to bring in revenue. That's, you know.
Yeah, we appreciate the fear. This is helpful in this budget discussion because it helps us identify the items that are, you know, as represented to the people, as you've indicated, that are, that should be prioritized in the budget.
Yeah.
So as we bring the, as we then look at that and attach dollar sites to it, we bring that forward to you, then we look forward to having your support on those things.
Right, and and I'm, and I will, you know, I will say that I brought this up a year ago. I I just don't understand why it's taking so long. And then, um, I did get some uh feedbacks from some community members, and uh they they said they did reach out to you, Alex, and about e-commerce, you know, so if you could follow up with that person. And I think that's the way to go, and and then also uh uh work with the Chamber of Commerce, so.
I have followed up with that particular company, and the city has a policy where we don't provide preference for one business over another. There's not a whole lot we can do thereafter. I did connect them with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm hoping that there's a relationship there, but, um, yeah.
I think the Chamber of Commerce is going to be working with them so we could.
That's good.
Piggyback with them.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. Okay, expenditures, labor and costs, transfers out, like, we can keep going. That's good. And this is the reserve waterfall policies. So, um, this is our waterfall. I couldn't think of a good graphic, so this is as good as it was going to get unless I think of something else. But effectively, this is how, remember, we've been talking about that leftover money at the bound, the fund balance? This is how it gets divvied up. This is how it gets divvied up, and this is how the city council has to find it to be divvied up. And it's, I'll point at the page G, the pages in the budget book. I'm actually going to go through it because we need to make it simpler. And uh, but we, this, this is, this is our salvation, by the way. This is say, this is the, the reason you have reserves is for tough times and for difficult times, because it gets you through to the better times. But this effectively, all these different pots of money, plus some others, uh, council, uh, Mayor Montana, the public art fund is completely separate, separate. It's about a million dollars, and we'll give you balances of all these funds. But it's a completely separate, not general fund. It's a completely separate fund. It's funded by capital dollars.
Yeah, uh, because I wanted to find out, what are all the funds?
Yeah.
All the buckets.
Yeah, we have many, 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 many buckets. Some of them are eighty biddies, but we'll provide you with that information. Some of them probably can be consolidated, but we just need to figure out which ones we need to keep.
Yeah, and and now that we're on the arts fund, I think when, there's a lot of developers that have uh developed their projects, and for some reason, our city did not go out, did not uh ask them to contribute to the arts fund. And that we need to make sure that we stay on it.
Um, and we can keep going. And this is in I chart territory. This is basically all our funds. All the way to the right is our audited number. So you're looking at an audited number of all of our general fund reserves, the public art reserve, different fund. And we'll have a a learning on funds, the difference between all these funds, because it's important to understand them as well, because I got educated on. But that's just, we'll, we'll keep moving on there. Let's go to our next one. Council for us prioritization. Um, we'll turn this over to Matt.
On the next slide, please. Sure, to the reserves.
So the uh artificial turf replacement, that one, I've been hearing a lot of controversial people saying that, that it's not really good for the environment. Can you, can you give us some feedback about which is it better to have the natural grass or artificial? What's the, what the benefits and disadvantages and advantages?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start. Um, there, the challenge that cities and school districts have is there really is in today's day and age when there is so much demand for playing fields. It is impossible unless you have a twenty field natural grass sports complex somewhere where you can rotate fields in and out. It's pretty much impossible for, it's pretty much impossible for cities to, sorry. I I've got conversations on both sides.
Can you guys be mindful of?
All right, so, sorry, 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 the, sorry. I'm not sorry, sorry, sorry. See, see.
You're distracting.
It's, uh, yeah, unfortunate, unfortunately, the, um, it's nearly impossible to, um, with natural grass fields to maintain them in the quality that communities need. And so, um, every community does, unfortunately, not unfortunately, every community does need uh artificial turf fields in the mix to ensure that we have as much playability as possible. So there has been some discussion, um, over the years, um, it pops up a lot, um, regarding the environmental and other as aspects of artificial versus natural grass. We do just have one location where we have artificial turf at the sports center. And um, and this is what this reserve is for. But when, when it comes time to replace that artificial turf, we'll definitely have a conversation with council about it.
How many years is that?
How many years do we have left, Renee?
Um, we opened the field in twenty sixteen, and so typically, you're looking at somewhere around the fifteen-year mark. Depending, it just depends on how much use it gets. For example, there was another field in Milpitas that was artificial. They replaced it at twenty years.
So twenty thirty then somewhere?
You probably want to start looking at it. We're going to hit the twen- uh, the ten-year mark. So we'd probably want to look at it and then do maintenance, and then maybe five years after that, we're looking at replacement.
All right, thank you. Yeah, okay, that, we have a council member now.
Yeah, a couple of months ago, I went to a um, meeting with Supervisor Lee. As um, this main speaker is, uh, they talk about all um, artificial turf, uh, is very harmful for the health. Um, and if we don't have to, I would say we, we don't install our official turf anymore in Milpitas. Um, and also yesterday, I heard on the radio, they, uh, um, some study has done on microplastic. Um, microplastic is anything plastic that is, um, deteriorate into with small particles and get into our bodies. So, um, that will be very harmful uh to our youth and not only youth, but uh everyone else. So I would, uh, be much against our official turf to be installing milpitas.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. So we're, we only have one location right now in Milpitas with artificial turf at the sports center, and we're a number of years away from needing to replace that artificial turf. So at that time, and when we need to replace it, we'll bring that discussion back to council.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and you know what? Now that you mention that, I did hear is that, uh, those microplastics are getting into everything. All the sea, uh, the oceans, even the atmosphere, even the clouds, they've, that scientists have done studies and they've have found those little plastic micro, but I don't know what they call microplastics, and they're in, they're in the environment already.
Uh, not only in the environment, but it's on each one of us. We are absorbing every day, uh, microplastics.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you for that feedback.
Kind of somber, but.
Mayor?
Customer.
Thank you. Um, Director, uh, Luz, can you share how much we have in our reserve?
Sorry. Sorry, uh, in our overall general fund reserves as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, which is the last time we looked at it, not the last time we looked at it, but the last time we have an audited number, is eighty-five point three million. That's a general fund. We have lots of different funds and reserves in other areas. Okay?
Thank you.
So, uh, so Luz, I had asked about comparing with other cities have. Did you, did you ever get that information out?
We actually got a whole bunch of information, and the challenge is, is not everybody calls it the same thing, so we're having to do a lot of callbacks. And so it's, it's, for example, San Jose doesn't call out their, their budget reserve specifically. We know they have one. So, but it's so, because we're looking at public documents, we're happy to call people during the budget topic, we're going to go back. We've gotten, um, just about everybody, I've gotten everybody in Santa Clara, but there's some others that I want to get, like Fremont and Acre, that are also compared.
But you'll give the second.
Yeah.
Okay, just comparison. Uh, customer.
Uh, Director Luz, how many months will that eighty-five point three million sustain us?
Years, you mean?
Years.
Um, looking at assume, assuming, again, that the revenues come in even at our lower estimates, we would have, um, if you go back We would have, um, if you go back to that spreadsheet. And there's also, s- some of those are not, are not, um, yeah, okay. Um, I would tell you that we could, and I think I mentioned this before, we could go all the way to twenty thirty. Twenty thirty even with the money that we have just in contingency reserve and budget stabilization.
Oh, when I asked you before, you told me between two to three months. What is that number?
Which number, what you're saying?
I asked you how much money we have on reserve and I said, how, how long will it last us? And you said, I think you told the mayor six months and you told me two to three months. What are, what is that number versus that number that you're telling me that's amount of years?
I must have misheard the question because.
It was forty-six, four, forty-six million, that's not eighty.
I would just say, there's two ways to look at it. One is if, let's just say, a dramatic emergency happened. And zero cash was flowing into the city, how mu- how long could we last? That's one way of looking at it. The other way of looking at it is to say, okay, assuming this revenues come in as expected, um and that red line deficit was there. How long would our reserves last? So there's two different ways of looking at it.
I'm sorry, I must have.
I don't get it.
I must have misheard the question.
For me, it was the previous financial director that gave me this six months.
Yeah, I think they were talking about just a general rule of thumb and so it sounds like we'll have to have some follow-up.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I think that, I think of the previous, yeah, the previous discussion last year, the year before, I think. There was just a general rule of thumb that was put out there about how much in reserves a city should have, just in case of emergency.
Yeah, there, there is a lot of guidance up there, but it really is up to the risk of the organization and the size. And so, and its ability to recover. So, I, yeah, we have guidance and I can provide you some, some ranges.
I apologize. I, I thought it came from you. But I, you, you, yeah, but even the previous, even the previous told me two to three months. That's why. So I, I need to know, with the reserve, you don't have to answer no. How many months is that good for?
Can, and can I just clarify, council member Chu, you're asking, just if no money was coming in and if there's an emergency, how long would our reserves last?
Right.
Okay, well.
To fund the workers.
To fund everybody. As, as you usually have, your expenditure.
Okay.
Your staff and everybody.
So council member. I, I, I understand your question. Um, so if we had no revenues coming in, we were in a state of emergency and we needed to pay our staff. Each of our contingency reserves, the two, the two larger ones that you saw, the sixteen point six seven percent. Would fund two months of staff salaries. So we would be able to. We would be able to, we would be able to fund staff for four months, based on those two reserves, if we had nothing else coming in.
So what's the difference? It was forty-five, if I remember correctly, and now it's eighty-five? What, what happened?
So the two that we were referring to is on the far right, under the unassigned to, you have the general fund contingency reserve.
I can't, I can't see that. I have to look at my phone.
I can't make a bigger, I'm sorry. Um, and our budget stabilization, each of those as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, sit at twenty point eight million dollars. So those two reserves alone are what we say we fund to have two months of staff.
Which one is that?
So if you go to the far right, the second table, says unassigned to, and the first two items on there is general fund contingency reserve.
Okay.
And the budget stabilization reserve. Both of those have twenty point eight million dollars apiece in there. Those would fund approximately two months of staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nat.
Thank you, Vanna.
Get one of those little things.
And, and, and vice mayor, perhaps you, I, you may have been looking at the forty-nine point two.
I can't see.
There, that's the combination of all of those unassigned. We were referring to just those top two items where we mentioned the twenty, the forty million.
Yeah, I think when I was brief, uh that's the, the number that uh was indicated to me. And then at that time, I calculated it three or four years and then it's dropped. Uh, on the tenure protection, if you uh fill in the forty-eight million.
If you assume the level of service, if you assume all the other revenues are coming in as estimated, we have forty million in those two pots of money. I'm not touching the other forty-five.
Right.
And you get through to.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I think.
It's.
But that's if uh, everything.
Twenty-nine, thirty, but we'll go back a month and we'll make the charts bigger next time. I think we're almost close to the end. Let's hang in there.
So that means it's like twenty plus a month? Is that what you're saying?
The salaries with, are about ten million, ten point five million dollars a month, if we were to fund all of.
All the services, twenty point eight.
Right, that, so the twenty point eight covers two months of staff.
Thank you. You made that very clear. Thank you so much. I know.
She knows exactly what I was looking for. If we could just get to the rest of this presentation.
We're getting close.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I've got, I've it.
They're not new, they're experts. We're in a way better position than.
Thank you. So, a couple more slides here and then we'll have this closeout slides. So there's um, two slides here that I'm gonna share that I wanna make sure we have a, um, share with you today. And then in our future discussions with you, we will need to, um, you know, there'll need to be some recommended action, um, uh if any. So the first one is, as you know, we have a quarterly council prioritization process. And based on those projects that are prioritized by the mayor and city council, we track them um for completion. Now, if there's a project that's prioritized by the mayor and city council that still needs funding. Then we push that conversation into the next budget process. So I briefly wanted to talk about six projects on here, um regarding funding. So the first is a planning commission stipend, that is a project that was, or in, in a priority that was prioritized by the mayor and city council. And if we do complete, proceed with the stipend to our planning commission, we have an estimate of about eleven thousand five hundred fifty dollars per year that we would need. We are planning on bringing this discussion forward separately to the mayor and city council. Um, at some point in the next few months, but we wanted to make sure we shared this free information as part of this discussion today. The next one is business tax modernization. This was prioritized at the recent city council prioritization meeting. Um, we estimate about two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, one-time funding that would be needed to put that on the ballot. Um, and so that's something we wanna strongly consider as part of this budget process. The next item is citywide senior discount. So we have been looking at this for a while. And we are planning on briefing you all over the next two to three weeks on where we stand on this. And getting your feedback so that we can bring a discussion to the mayor and city council on this in, um likely in early April. Um, so there'll be more information at our briefings with you on what we're starting to estimate regarding potential funding needs for this. So those three that I just mentioned will still need funding if we're to proceed. The next three items, we have identified one-time funding sources to proceed now. Um, although they could and may need ongoing funding sources in the future for, to continue them. So the first one is a night market and place making events on Main Street. Our economic development team has identified one-time funding that's currently available to proceed with that effort of this year. And if we come, if we proceed with that in future years, it's possible we may need more funding in future years. The permit process analysis and the citywide job fair. We um have identified one time, identified one-time funding to proceed with those council priorities this year. And it's possible, we may or may not need ongoing funding for those in the future, depending on um how we wanna manage those in the future. But again, those last three items on this list, we do feel we have one-time funding now to proceed. Next slide, please. So for the, um, as you know, we spent, we had a significant amount of funding that was invested in our community from the American Rescue Plan Act. And in order to ensure that we, um, go in, that's, oh, so. Um, in, in order to ensure that we um spent all that American Rescue Act, Rescue Plan Act funding in time. We did a transition and we completed and utilized the ARPA funding. But we did in turn fund these projects out of our general fund. And there's six projects on here where we either already have completed and have savings, or we anticipate having savings. So ultimately, we're calling it now the Community Investment Fund Program as opposed to the ARPA program. We anticipate having approximately five hundred and eight thousand dollars in one-time funding. That can be spent on other city council priorities. And we'd like to, we'll likely propose allocating that towards um, that, allocating these funds as part of this budget process. And so I'd be happy to take any feedback you have, we'd be happy to take any feedback you have this evening. On these two slides regarding council priorities and community investment fund one-time dollars available. Otherwise, we will return and discuss these further at our future budget discussions with you.
Questions from my colleagues? So I have a question. So each one of these, what department is that?
Sure, this is um, beautify Milpitas was our public works department. Um, workforce development was from our economic development, emergency management was our fire department. Cadillac converter was multiple departments, including police, economic development, city manager's office. And the last two, funds administration, that was uh finance and unallocated funds wasn't, didn't belong to a department. We sent out an informational memorandum last week that provided a pretty detailed explanation of the status of every program within. The Community Investment Fund as well. If there's any further information, I have a copy of that this evening as well.
So it's now it's called Community Investment?
Yes, because we, um, we've officially spent all the city Milpitas' ARPA funding on time. By the end of last cal- calendar year, by the end of last calendar year. However, we do have these general funds available that were allocated last calendar year by the mayor and city council to these programs. And so.
By the way, that's in the general.
Correct, that's general fund dollars and so it's extremely flexible dollars that can be used to um, you know, meet other needs in this budget process.
And so when do you want us to decide on this?
We will, not tonight. Uh, we're not asking for any decisions tonight. If you wanna provide any feedback, that'd be great. Otherwise, um, the feed, otherwise we will be back in front of you um at a future time later this spring for a discussion. And ultimately, as part of, in June, when you adopt the budget is when we would want the final decision on this.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Go to the schedule slide.
Okay, so as you can see in the, the schedule here, we're three, three in here on our budget study session. We'll start having our open town hall meetings, um surveys with our community over the next two months in March and April. Um, community engagement itself will be in April. And then we'll be bringing the um, public works, we'll be bringing the CIP. And we'll be bringing the user regulatory fee updates for your consideration in April. Um, and then our operating budget study session that will inform the final um approval um in June.
Mayor, we have a council member Chu.
Thank you, mayor. Can you bring the CIP budget before the council adoption? Cuz there are, there are some issues that I would like to bring up on that for the entire council.
Sure, our next step on the CIP budget would be to provide, to um, for briefing to each of you to better understand um, any feedback you have.
I, I just don't want you to come to, to the council and it's already adoption. Oh, oh, uh, there should be another meeting before adoption, cuz we gave you feedback. You should come back with a feedback and the total CIP. That's what I'm saying. Don't come, come to the council with adoption already. We need to review the feedback and, and what was there before. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
So you're saying, uh, April fifteenth, which is the CIP budget city council adoption, that's when we take action. So you, so you wanna have that, me, another one before that, or unless you move that, that April fifteenth to a later date?
Yeah, we'll, we'll. Yeah, based on all the feedback we're hearing today, including this feedback, we're gonna kinda, kinda take a, sharpen an iron um on our budget process and all the next steps. And we'll be, we'll follow up with you.
It's due to the feedback that we got today. We, we are in deficit. We need to review the CIP to see what projects do we really have to do. What projects are, do we, do we have to do? Or are there projects that can wait? That's, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, I'd like that, to review our feedback, yeah.
We're only presented once.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I agree with that. That's. Yeah, we were presented uh with the CIP once. We had a good discussion. We had feedback. And right, if that calendar is, is accurately visual to me, it's April fifteenth. That's the time that we approve it. This will be less, you know. If, if we do that, then. Both side, I mean, we will fail because you will force the council to decide on the toes, in, on their toes, uh without further explanation. So I agree with uh, uh council member Chu. Let's have a meeting prior to that, just to, to sheet, to. To share the feedbacks that we had on the very first one, before I present as a, a CIP budget on the fifteenth.
Yeah, to tie any loose ends and add more feedback.
Because what I will say on the fifteen is what you had proposed, no, we'll, nothing will change within me, right? So I, I, we are one, uh, we want, uh, we, I, I wish our, our feedback uh is incorporated as well. But if we go by the schedule, that's what we're gonna see.
Thank you.
It's okay. You're good with that? Okay, thank you.
I think we've received it. I think we've received your feedback. I think we'll be talking much more. I do thank you. You know me, I always like to, you know me, I always like the discussion cuz it warms the journey. So I appreciate that. Again, council member Lam, I appreciate you're, you're, you're calling me out on that. I did not intend for that. But I do wanna thank everybody here there talking, I really, and I wanna thank everybody here on the team. I wanna thank Ned, especially Stu Gomak, pointing out the reserves.
You gotta invest in one of those little cursing things.
I have, when it doesn't show up. But anyway, thank you, thank you. I really appreciate this. We, we take note.
We wanna thank you. I mean, you're giving us more data that I was expecting, which is very helpful. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Do you have any comments to, to staff?
I'm thinking perhaps the staff can come up with a plan. Uh, for balanced budgets. Uh, yeah, i- i- it's, it's not just uh depend on us. You need to be one step ahead of us. A three-step ahead of us, whoever, it's just, uh, you know, as we see this, I, I feel like. Um. Something is missing. Yeah, something is missing, yeah. So, uh, a- a- and then. A- a- and, and you guys are, should be do, doing the budget in, every day. And then you should know where the money goes. Um, and, and I'm not sure why are we in this situation, situations, yeah.
That's, that's actually, I think, a good place to end this. So tonight was a study session, as I mentioned. We, we typically have this at the end of January, so a little bit earlier, but we wanted to bring you good numbers. So I assure you, we, we look at the budget every day. And as you saw, there's a schedule here, we will be having additional uh for here. You know, there, there isn't a, a, another study session like this on the other end. But in between that, we will continue to have briefings, we will continue to have meetings, we can even have another check-in with the council if we need. To have one based on the briefings that we have. So this is just the beginning of the process. And then over the next few months, we'll be working with you to put that budget together. But we really do appreciate this initial feedback tonight. Thank you.
Well, I, I appreciate council member Lam. He's a, he's a numbers guy. I like that, really appreciate that. Do you have anything to say, that Karen? And then, do you have anything to say?
No, I'm good, uh, mayor. Uh, I just wanna thank the team for that very good and detailed financial. And bring, you know, you bring that up to us just to wake us up, to make sure that we work with you to have a balanced budget. And like council member Lam said, something is missing. So we gotta find that missing piece.
So I wanna thank everyone, all the staff, uh, you're all hard workers and um, just really, we're all in it together. We're all in it, in this together, you know, uh, us that we're residents. I mean, we lived here for a long time and we really want to see our city thrive, you know. Cuz if, if our city thrives, our residents thrive. So thank you for all the hard work that you're doing. Thank you. Thank you for the budget. So this meeting is not over yet. No, I need to adjourn it. So, uh, the city council will, will convene at their normally scheduled regular meeting. In the council chambers at seven o'clock. in the council chambers at seven o'clock. So and I guess in an hour or so. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.